All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Tuesday, September 2nd regular council meeting. It's six o'clock. Welcome to those online and in chambers. We will go ahead and start off tonight with the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. So I'm gonna put Mayor Perotam on the spot and ask if you'd like to do the invocation. Thank you.
Our heavenly Father, we are very grateful for the opportunity to come together as a community tonight to do the business of the city and to counsel together. We ask for your blessing on this meeting that we can work in a way that is collaborative and to the benefit of all of our citizens. And we also ask for your, your hand and guidance this evening as well. In Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen. The states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Do roll call. I will note that Councilmember Dunn is back on the west side for a family situation. So when we get done, if someone could make a motion to excuse him, it would be appreciated. Councilmember Van Orman.
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Val.
Here.
Member Tim Cargill.
Present.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Present.
All right. Do we have a motion for Councilmember Dunn?
Motion to excuse Councilmember Dunn.
Second. Motion and second by Councilmember Spencer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we go to agenda approval.
Mayor, if there are no proposed changes, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Second. Grab me a pen.
There's one right here.
Oh, never mind.
I guess I just landed in the chair then.
It's pride. All right. All right. Those in favor of, do we have a second on the agenda approval? Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz. Those in favor of approving the agenda as printed, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right? Motion passes six zero. We are up to citizen comments. This week, if you have a citizen comment and you're in chambers, our sheets are white. They are on the table next to the door. Please fill one out and get it to Rochelle at the end of the table. Who will pass it over to me. If there's anybody online who'd like to make a comment, please send a note to our meeting host in the chat feature and we will make sure you get called on. In the meantime, while we're waiting on people maybe for that, we do have one written comment that our city clerk will read into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. We did receive one written comment from Lynn Atkins, the city resident. She provided a written comment regarding the August 7th, 2025 Library Open House event.
Great, thank you. So is there anybody in house? Doesn't look like it. Do we have anybody online? Nope. Okay, so we just remember there will be another opportunity for citizen comments later on. We don't have any announcements, proclamations, or special presentations, so we'll jump right to reports and inquiries, starting with city council. Anybody have any reports? Councilmember Kennedy.
Yes, if I may. Probably a very serious report that it looks like we had a breakout of the goats. We had a stampede of the goats. I understand that there were six of them that broke out of the pen and took off and gave our employees a merry chase throughout the city. But I also understand that they were able to gain control of all those except one. Did you happen to have a were able to bring it up on the screen? What's comical about this?
You know, at your house?
One of the, one of the goats named Annie.
Good name.
Annie, I'm told, broke the crowd and was off on her own and the boys knew approximately where she was, but they hadn't pinned her down. What happened is if you see that white car there, I was in the process of backing out of my garage. The garage door went up. I looked to my left and I saw something and it was a gentleman holding, well, he wasn't holding goat at the time. He was to the left of me and he walks around my car and I look and I said, can I help you? And on the right inside of my car, he said, there's a goat in your garage. And I wish I was quick thinking to say, okay. I said, I beg your pardon. There's a goat in the garage. And lo and behold, I said, where? And I go in with him and the goat was hiding behind the table saw.
Oh.
So the gentleman goes out in front, signals the rest of the employees. They came in like stampeding and stuff. It was hilarious. Hilarious. Now, here's a hilarious thing, if I can go on a little bit. About four years ago, I was at a council meeting and I left early and the goats were in the same spot and one of them got out. My son lives directly above where the goats were. He got up and was on my son's porch. I left the meeting. I text the mayor and said, the goats are out. She got ahold of Jen, they came and got it. And the goat was at my son's house. I hurry up four years later, we have the goats that escaped. Now, think about this. We have one goat, Annie, that has many homes that can hide it. Where does it go? One of the council members' garage.
That's funny.
That in the south was absolutely hilarious, so.
That's funny.
That's my report.
All right, well, we need to, well, it's apropos that we're looking for a goat statue coming up, so maybe we need to give it a temporary home in your front yard to begin with.
Mike, you're a goat magnet.
My son said, well, he was naturally there because they wanted to see another old goat.
That's great. All right. Councilmember Van Orman.
Well, I figure September's going to be a very, very busy month. We are going to be doing the kiosk for the, our breedom this weekend for the Lions Club. So that should be done and hopefully installed by next week. And we're doing the bed race in September, on September 19th, and we're doing the build a bed. So anybody that wants to come out and help us build beds on September 12th and 13th, it's going to be done at the local food bank down at, off of Euclid and Harvard. So.
That's, that was fun. I helped with that one year. It was a lot of fun putting this together.
So we've got about a hundred kids that are going to be getting new beds and all of this, we'll be raising funds for that. So come on out and and participate. That would be awesome.
All right. Anybody else? All right, not hearing any. I'll make mine as short as possible. Last week, we had, yeah, last Monday, there was a tour of five of the Central Valley Elementary Schools that were able to get new safety features in their lobbies to help safeguard the kids. And so I was able to attend the one at Liberty Lake Elementary on Monday. So they've reconfigured the lobby there for some better safeties when people come in and out of the building. And just, you know, a nod to the school district once again for being able to, you know, be able to do these projects across the district, not just in certain areas so that the entire community is able to benefit. They've had, I take that back where there, I think there were three, my fault. I think there's a total of six projects. They're doing half this year and half next year. So this was, they were able to get, move forward some of the funds from the bond that was passed a year or so ago so to do it now because it was, you know, obviously very much a high priority for the safety for the kids. So well attended and they had the open house that night. So I think they had more kids in attendance at that ribbon cutting than they did at the other schools just because everybody was coming for that. But it was a great, great, great event. And again, thumbs up to the school district for making sure they keep our kids safe. This coming weekend is the Rim Ride, Family Ride on Saturday with the longer rides on Sunday. So if you haven't signed up, please do. I'm volunteering. I try not to get run over by the kiddos every year at the family ride, but it's great to see the little ones out on their trikes. And then, you know, by the end of the time, the parents end up dragging the trikes and having the kids in their arms. So it's, it's a great time to get out. And then Friday, this coming, this Friday coming up is the semi-annual council of governments meeting. We always have it the opening day of the fair. It's when mayors and some council members from all of our jurisdictions around here get together with the county commissioners. We kind of do a little bit of a regional update. And then if nobody has a job to go back to, or they take the day off, they get to, we get to stay at the fair all day for free. You should go back to work. But it's always a good time to kind of share what's going on in all of our communities. So I think that's it because Mark's got everything else on his city administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing you should notice is incorrect date on the, on the front of this. It's actually September the 2nd, 2025. And so a couple of events to remind you about. The mayor mentioned the Rim Ride that's coming up. There are also virtual rides available and registration is still open for this. So if you can't get out and do one of the, the rides through town, there are virtual rides available that you can look into on the Rim Ride website. Next Tuesday on actual September 9th, a week from today, is going to be a ribbon cutting that the Spokane Valley, the Greater Spokane Valley Chamber is hosting over at Horman Commercial Doors. This is a new business in town. It's going to be at 3:00 PM. If you have any questions, they can all be answered by visiting the Spokane Valley Chambers website. And then on Saturday, September 13th, is the annual cops, cars, and cruisers event, which is going to start at 9:00 AM. I believe it runs through 3:00 PM. And this is out at the Mode Campus at Meadowwood Tech in that area. And then finally, just a reminder, this is farther downstream. But just to get it on your calendars, we'll send out separately and notice it separately. But the city council special meeting to discuss the governance manual is going to be on Tuesday, September 30th. So as we're looking out at those events, that's what we've got here over the next several weeks. Any questions about those before we move on? All right, very good. So we want to give you a quick update about a code issue that has sprung up out at Trailhead Clubhouse. And I'm going to ask Lisa to bring you up to speed on that.
Good evening, council members. So as Chevalier just was working on their, their improvements, they had discovered that there was a problem with how the sprinklers had been attached. And they found out because they actually knocked a part of it down. And anyhow, long story short is that they brought it to my attention. I asked Tracy Harvey with Spokane Valley Fire District to come with me to see what was going on. They determined that it was the incorrect attach, the hangers for the sprinkler system. And that, and so we looked at potential solutions. It was the, the attachment was screwed into SIPs panels, which are foam and plywood with, with intervals of wooden beams. Anyhow, long story short is that in order to, in order to correct the problem, we contacted Bowton, who reached out to the man, the SIPs manufacturer for their, for their engineering on this to, for the recommended thing. It took, it took us a little while to get down to what the, what the proper installation was for that. Keep in mind that this is all fire district stuff, not building stuff. Long story short, working with Tracy, we finally came up with a solution. Bowton contacted their subcontractor, the fire suppression subcontractor that they used. And they are going to be out on Friday reattaching using the appropriate hangers. And following the engineer's recommendation. So that's, it was fortunate that we found the problem and Bowton stepped up to the plate and came up with the solution and it's all going to be resolved.
So two, two things. Notice, it was not a life safety issue. If it had been, we would have had to shut down the whole building.
That's correct.
And who is paying for the repishment?
Bowton. Well, actually technically their sub is, but it's, it's not on.
Yeah, exactly. That's the point. Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, thanks for pushing through that. I know it was difficult to get ahold of people and getting responses. Go ahead.
So how, how does this affect the opening of the restaurant?
It actually doesn't. It actually doesn't. In fact, Bowton's fire sub is, is actually going out Friday at 4:00 AM to do the whole, to get it all done in one day so that it does not impact the schedule. We asked them to expedite it because Chevalier just is very close to being ready to final on there and we wanted to make sure that, that this did not hold them up.
Right. That's good. Thank you. Great. Before we move to the next thing, real quick, I just want to note Sean is actually online. We can't promote him to panelists. He's on the phone. So for everybody who's here, he is with us today.
And it actually looks like you all's versions say September 2nd. I have the only one. I think that says September the 9th.
Just let him go.
So with that, thank you, Lisa. I'm going to invite Ben up to the podium to talk to you about a WM rate adjustment that residential ratepayers are going to see on their bills starting in October. So Ben, take it away.
So this is very exciting stuff. So we were notified, notified recently by Waste Management that there will be a rate increase. This is due to the Washington State Legislature Passing House Bill 2081, which increased the business and occupation tax rate from 1.75% to 2.1%. So effectively 0.35% increase in our, on our rates. So basically, if you've got a $50 garbage bill, you're never, now going to have a $50 and 18 cent garbage bill. So this is, this has been, this is, so this has been in the paper, in the Spokane area papers last Friday. It'll also be in next Friday. Rochella put that out to the paper. So that'll serve as the public notice. As of October 1st, everybody's garbage bill will go up. Like I said, about 18 to 25 cents, depending on what kind of services you have. So any questions on that?
So this is one of those contract allowable pass-throughs that we just have to notify everybody about. So we're giving you a heads up because it's been, there's been some chatter out there. Thank you, Ben. And the last item on my report is just an update regarding the 2026 budget. We're getting ready to roll formally into the budget season where council gets involved in, and you'll see it on the upcoming meeting schedule when we talk about it, the list of meetings that has already been scheduled. But from an input perspective, we're coming to the end of our engagement phase that deals with input. So we have all of the input that, that's been made. And so now the next phase of the engagement is making sure that as we go through the conversations with the council and we go through revisions and edits, that we're just making all of those things known and keeping the lines of communication open with residents and businesses as we go through that process. So you'll see a change in the way that we announce engagements going forward. All of that's planned to coincide with the formal start of the budget season. So any questions about any of those before we move on? And seeing none, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Great. Okay. All right. Next up, I'm pleased to welcome new CEO, STA Carl Austin, for STA update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Commisses Minskis and members of the city council. It's a pleasure being here tonight. Many friendly faces and including former members of the STA Board of Directors, including Councilmember Kennedy and Councilmember Van Orman, who also served as Chair once or twice.
Once.
Once. And so it's a pleasure being here tonight to give you an update on your transit system, the STA. If you go to the next slide. Just a reminder that Spokane Transit Authority is a public transportation benefit area authority under state law. It's a special district municipal corporation. We extend from Cheney and Medical Lake on the west to Spokane Valley and Liberty Lake on the east. Next slide. We have 52 bus routes, over 1,700 stops across the region, 178 buses in our active fleet right now in our fixed route fleet. Forty of those are battery electric buses. This includes a city line as well as about 30 other, 29 other buses. 122 paratransit vans that provide mobility for individuals whose disabilities prevent them from riding regular bus service. And we're budgeted, sorry, rideshare vans, 101 for our formerly known van pool program, but we're calling it rideshare as we start bringing on some Chevy Tahos and other types of vehicles that our people like better than those big vans. We have budgeted 794 employees. We're slightly under that, just ongoing recruitment and attrition, kind of working those two angles at the same time. Sales tax rate, we are authorized by voters to collect up to eight tenths of a cent of sales tax. That includes two tenths that is subject to a sunset imposed by the board as part of the ballot measure in 2016. Next slide. So in Liberty Lake, we have four current routes, Route 172, which I took here tonight. That was implemented as part of the STA moving forward plan to provide express service nonstop between Liberty Lake and Spokane. There's also Route 724, which is, is over time, we've, we've served some of the, the business areas of Liberty Lake in different ways. This was a way to be more clear to our customers what we're doing, but also provide a better schedule for those living, working in Liberty Lake and living elsewhere in the region. So it's, it serves Multer and many of the jobs in that east end of Liberty Lake. Route 98 since 2011 has provided seven day week service to Liberty Lake. In 2022, as you've seen, the south side of the city grow, including the new high school, Ridge Lane High School. We've moved that route to the south side to, to connect the high school and other development areas. Well, then shifting Route 74, which has long served the city to serve, operate on the north side of the freeway between Liberty Lake Road and all the way west to our Mirabeau Transit Center. Next slide. So our overall system ridership has surpassed 2019 levels. In the United States, of those, among those agencies that provide over 5 million rides a year, there are only seven agencies in the entire country that have exceeded their 2019 ridership. So STA is one of those seven. It's pretty significant, especially considering that two of the other seven provide free service at taxpayer expense with no rider contribution to the cost. And so we still collect a fare, albeit we know that the the STA has authorized youth to ride free and the state provides a grant, a formula grant to, to actually more than offset our lost revenue for that. So we are over 10 million rides as of 2024. We expect to exceed that number again in 2025. You can see that I have, that's on the far right are the numbers for the full risk, full fixed route system. And then the four routes that serve Liberty Lake. You'll see that generally those routes have not come back as strong as the rest of the system. That really is a reflection of downtown Spokane employment activity. And so we've seen, not only are there fewer jobs in the downtown core as there used to be, there are people who are not working five days a week out of the downtown. They're, they're enjoying their home office two to three days a week going into the, to downtown. So they may be riding the bus still, but just not as often. But the system at large is performing pretty really well. You see Route 74 has continued to climb. We, that route will change and I'll just share that in a moment. And then the 724 being new, you also see that ridership growth and kind of stabilizing between 23 and 24. We do have service changes coming up. If we go to the next slide. Last time I was here, I was sharing with you some of the planning for that and seeking feedback from the community on this. We are introducing Route 7. It will replace Route 74 as, as well as Route 60 that goes to the airport today and provide one continuous route between Liberty Lake and the airport via downtown Spokane as well as parts of Spokane Valley, including Long Indiana and our Mirabeau Transit Center. This will run seven days a week. It will be our first route emanating from the valley, Greater Spokane Valley area that operates on the freeway. We started service in 2024 on Saturdays on this stretch. We've seen an uptick of that usage and are looking forward to this providing a continuous trip from end to end. It also will mean that we'll have earlier service to the airport. So the first buses arriving at the airport will now come in before 6:00 AM. Still not early enough for those 5:00 AM flights. But certainly good enough for those maybe TSA pre to catch a seven o'clock flight. We also are introducing a new route that's specific to Liberty Lake that is, it doesn't leave the city limits. That is Route 93 Multer. And as we've, we've operated on this stretch in different ways over the years, some to great confusing effect to our riders because of the, the different turns. We sometimes will go one way or change to clockwise or counterclockwise or pause at different locations. And so in this case, it will always be a one-way loop, which we generally avoid. But in a small geographic footprint, this is really serving as a circulation to some of these job points, especially when the express service is not operating in the middle of the day. Provides access to, to key destinations in the city, like the library and those job centers and some of the multifamily. And so that will run weekdays and Saturdays. The next slide.
Real quick, when is that planning to start?
Oh, all of this is going to start, my last slide says this, but it's okay, September 21st. So we are coming right up.
Sweet.
And so I'll share some more information on how you can learn more about it. And then the 722, so I wrote the 172, it will actually be phased out. We will still maintain express service nonstop between Liberty Lake and downtown Spokane. But we're very interested, how can we better serve different job centers in downtown Spokane? So the county campus and Kendall Yards. Today, someone traveling by bus to downtown Spokane needs to make a transfer. So we are proposing, or not proposing, we have scheduled to extend this route effective Monday, the 22nd of September to, to travel down Riverside and then go north on Monroe Street and serve several stops along Monroe before terminating at a, the Howard Street parking lot that is operated and owned by the Public Facilities District. But we have a partnership there. There's a, basically a bus stop for operators and our customers who use our shuttle to go downtown. So that will run during peak periods and that means people from the county campus, STA employees, people who work in the Kendall Yards area will be able to walk directly to a bus stop without having to cross the river, without having to make a transfer and go to, straight to Liberty Lake. Also in Liberty Lake, then the, this express route will extend further and more consistently eastward along Mission Avenue after serving the Park and Ride. Going east all the way to Country Vista and then heading north on Country Vista till it basically turns into Route 724. And we're excited about this. We've had feedback over the years from those employment sites east of Multer, where they're walking great distances from the bus stop to catch a bus. So having new bus stops along Apaway east of Multer. So one of the key destinations has always been for a long time, Huntwood. And so having those, that service stop more directly at the front door or as far, close as the front door, you can get there. So those are other express routes. The two express routes, again, the 722 will replace the 172. So the last slide then goes to the, catch the chase here. We are making these changes effective September 21st. This will, it's been going into Liberty Lake Newsletter, STA's website. We'll also be out here for a few hours during the lead up to the change, helping customers at the Park and Ride and at some of the key stops. You can go online, Spokane Transit dot com slash change. Read all of this information. You also see that there is a very tall bus that is shown there. On, as part of this change, our seven vehicle fleet of double decker buses will be put into service between Spokane and Cheney, serving Eastern Washington University, West Plains Transit Center, where we have a significant over 140,000 boardings alone last year. Making connections across the West Plains, but a larger that, part of that, our employees going to Amazon, the different facilities out there. So we're looking forward to that. We'll have a ribbon cutting ceremony on the 20th. But all these changes and many more go into effect on the, on the 21st. So I'm happy to answer your questions. Again, just wanted to give you an update. Make my presence known as your new CEO of STA and happy to have Liberty Lake counted among the organizations as cities within the public transportation benefit area.
Well, I look forward to saving the city and my employer some money every time I go to the airport because Uber's been costing me 80 bucks or more. Once you put a tip in, so, or you pay for parking, right? So I'll be hopping on that bus on the 28th to let you know how it goes. Councilmember Ball and then Councilmember Kennedy.
Does the direct one with seven to the airport, does it, is there a transfer or can you just?
You stay on the bus the entire time.
It starts at the.
Liberty Lake Park and Ride.
And then, okay. Does it take you to the gate you want? Or I mean?
There's two stops at the airport, one at Concourse C and then Concourse AB closer to the luggage return in that case.
It'll stop you too.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, I want to congratulate you on your
Thank you.
well-deserved promotion. You've been there a long period of time and you've worked very hard and extremely deserving to be in that position. And I do appreciate that. It was great working with you during that period of time. My question is on the double decker buses, are they gas, diesel, or electric?
They are diesel.
Diesel. Thank you.
Welcome.
Councilmember Van Orman.
Yeah, I remember all this as we talked about it all those years ago. Really excited about the double deckers. But I do have a question. When we go past Huntwood, does the route go back to the first Liberty Apartments?
It goes as far as Country Vista. Getting a little farther, there's just some challenges with some of the road infrastructure at this point. And, and we want to just, this this gets us far enough to make sure that we maintain pair of transit service, which was introduced around two thousand and twenty-one at that location. But it also, you know, it's it's kind of baby steps as we we continue to go eastward.
Well, thank you. You you checked off all the boxes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thanks, Carl. You mentioned that there's a percentage of the the riders, the the youth that are riding for free. What percentage would you say of overall ridership?
Yeah, we do track. That's about twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
So it is, it is a part of significant part of our ridership rebound, no doubt about it. But it's interesting to note that all the agencies within Washington State opted to allow youth to ride free and receive the state grant. The King County Metro Sound Transit, Pierce Transit, C Tran agencies kind of in our size. We're the only one of those agencies that has exceeded two thousand and nineteen ridership.
Then is that up to eighteen or?
Through eighteen, so nineteen and older, they open up energy.
All right. Great information.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all.
Okay, next up, we have Liberty Lake Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. Just wanted to take a little opportunity tonight to introduce a new program to you that the Liberty Lake Police Department is going to be instituting. The one that did all the legwork on this was Lieutenant Mark Holdhouse. So I want to have him go ahead and introduce the program. And if you have any questions, he'll be able to answer them for you. Thank you.
Mayor Kamiskas, councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to come in and speak to you tonight about this new program that we are implementing. It's called Blue Bridge Alliance. Michelle, the PowerPoint may not match up with my notes here, so you can go through. There's only three slides on the PowerPoint. So I'll just kind of read through this the sheet here. It doesn't exactly match the sheet that you guys have that I put on your desk there. And then I'll kind of talk about it free form and then stand for any questions you might have. Basically, what does it do? Blue Bridge gives officers the chance to provide solutions that go beyond just traditional law enforcement. This gives them the opportunity to provide short-term, on-the-spot aid when long-term support isn't available. What can it provide in those need? Lodging until further resources are available. Food for those who may need it. Personal hygiene products or medical aid. An Uber home from a scary situation. A toy or a meal for a child whose parents are being detained. What will this look like in our community? We want to utilize Blue Bridge to help continue building the relationships between law enforcement and our community. This has proven to reduce crime in communities as well as simultaneously saving taxpayers money, ultimately working towards a brighter and safer community for all. So now I'm going to go free form here. So what this company does is they send us the amount of debit cards that we may ask for. We issue these debit cards to officers who want to participate. We can't force this. It's there is twenty-five hundred dollars of matching funds, so it's up to us to raise twenty-five hundred dollars. Whether that's for the community businesses, some of our officers, there's a Q R code on those sheets of paper, and I'll be visiting the community throughout the coming weeks. So again, Blue Bridge Alliance, they're the ones who maintain this program. There's a bank called PEX, P E X, that maintains our debit cards. Once we receive these funds, I transfer the funds to officer debit cards. Whether that's a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars, we kind of spread those funds evenly amongst those cards, those who want to participate. So what these cards are for again is when they come across a situation when someone who sincerely needs the help, perhaps it's a D V victim and they're new to the area. I've ran across this many times in my career where like they just, they don't have anybody to call, nowhere to go, so we can put them up in a hotel for a night. Any, any, anybody who's been a cop longer than a few years has run across a situation like this. And they'll maybe provide, you know, again, if there's children and we're at a scene, we're going to be there for a few hours, can buy them some half meals, something like that. So that's basically in a nutshell what this program does is it allows officers to to help people just in a temporary situation get through, perhaps buy them some toiletry, toothbrush, shoes, socks, something like that. So again, it's up to it's up to us to raise at least twenty-five hundred dollars and we have twenty-five hundred dollars of matching funds out there. I believe five grand at least will get us through the next couple of years. And our hope is to maintain a good sufficient amount in that bank to keep this program alive and well. I stand for any questions that you might have.
That's amazing. I didn't know you guys were working on this. Would this be something, Mark, that if there, I don't know what the the farmer's market schedule looks like, if there's something you guys would want to do at a farmer's market coming up for the end of the year to try to just meet with the community unless the foundation is helping with any of it?
We haven't spoken to them directly yet. I believe that they would, but I believe, yeah, the farmer's market is a great idea and I'd love to hang out there with the, one of your fine folks. The next couple of Saturdays, perhaps they give us a nice plastic plate to kind of put up that has, you know, the Q R code on it. And we can kind of talk to the folks in the community about this program and.
I'll look at the schedule before the end of the meeting.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Councilmember Ball and Councilmember Kurtz.
This is unrelated, but I'm just curious. Is the dog working yet or is it still training?
He's still in training. So one of the unique things, so he did go to training and on the East Coast earlier this year.
Yeah.
But one of the unique things about Washington State specifically is he has to be be able to be verbally called off of a bad guy. If he's chewing on a bad guy. Most states, you can yank the dog off. Washington requires that the dog be verbally called off. And so he's actually going to training here at the Spokane Police Academy for the next two to three months. So not quite in service just yet.
Are we going to get to meet him? You know, bring him in?
Yeah, at some point, yes. At some point, yeah. So we can verbally call him off if he goes after you. Just kidding.
All right, Councilmember Kurtz here.
I had a couple of questions. So it sounds like if the Q R code, like we could donate now?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, it's it's live and running and it's it'll take you to a site called Give Butter. That's the site that manages the fundraising efforts.
Okay. And then what has the response been from officers so far? They?
So we we have an officers' meeting coming up here in a couple of weeks, and so it hasn't been formally introduced to them yet. I wanted to do it in person rather than over email.
Right.
So hopefully we get more of their their buy-in and they're wanting to cooperate. So our P I O is aware of it. We're just waiting to release him. You know, he's very, he's very into the P I O stuff and the social, social media stuff. So once, you know, we wanted to obviously introduce it to you first before we then release it to the public and then we talked to our officers about it.
And then the last question I had, you talked about like hygiene items and that sort of thing. Is that something you guys are looking to have like on hand in the car or would you like take them to Walgreens?
I I think most guys would rather prefer to buy it on the spot. Sometimes we have these things that we have for those situations like a teddy bear or stuff like that. And then it can be such a while before it's used and we go to dig it out of the back of the car and it's all yeah, so probably better to be bought fresh. Yes.
All right, anybody else?
Only one thing in like a program is a lot of officers are doing this on a regular basis anyway. They're taking it out of their own funds and taking money and going, going to Viper and Donalds, whatever the case may be. So this is just another avenue for the officers to have something on hand. So when they come across people that are, they'll be able to provide the substance they deserve to be. But thank you.
And one additional comment, so when the officers do make a purchase, they do have to upload the receipt. And then they had to write a little synopsis, kind of what happened, and we submit that to Blue Bridge. So it is all tracked. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up, we are up to workshops, multi-family tax exemption program.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, so back in July, Building Ohana came and provided a fantastic update on some of the efforts that they are undertaking. And towards the end of of their update, they brought to our attention a potential taxing mechanism that the city could take advantage of if council so chooses. And then it was up to us to kind of bring you guys back an update after some research and give you some potential next steps on on any forward movement on what was referenced as the multi-family tax exemption program. Next slide, please, Evan. And so this program exists in the R C W under eighty-four fourteen. And cities with a population of fifteen thousand or more may offer multi-family tax exemption to stimulate construction of multi-family housing within designated areas. And a little bit later in in our update here, Lisa will guide you through some potential areas where we may see a benefit of of this program. And so eligible improvements within the designated area may receive a tax exemption on the increased value for a set period. And this is it's eight years, it's twelve years, it's twenty years, based on the level of involvement of affordable housing and whether or not a nonprofit is involved, you can extend those up to twenty years. The majority of these programs last for anywhere between eight to twelve years. Next slide, please. And so a summary of the eligible requirements. And so as a project, we must have four or more residential units to take advantage of this program. And twenty percent of those units must be low to moderate income households. And so the idea is not solely to target low-income housing. It is, and it states it in the R C W is there is a mix, and it's all under the umbrella of affordable housing, a mix of low to middle as as a again, as a mix of all of those households within a given program or project. So eligible improvements, obviously new construction, rehabs and conversions. And again, all of this is largely under the umbrella of affordable housing. And so these are explicitly allowed within multi-family tax exemption programs. So next slide, please. And so we have a, we have a fair amount of of comps to to kind of draw from. Spokane has eight and twelve-year exemptions for nine targeted areas throughout their city. And so you'll find something very similar with Tacoma and Bellingham. Some outfits will call them different things. And so Wenatchee has a residential deficient urban center that is classified as a multi-family tax exemption program. Yakima has a downtown redevelopment zone. And so these are all kind of under the umbrella of the M F T E program. And so Lisa's going to walk you through where we might see some potential benefit within our city with those and then some potential potential outcomes and potential next steps as we further investigate whether the city has an appetite for this specific tax exemption program.
Next slide, please, Evan. So I wanted to walk you through some possible areas where you may want to consider M F T E. Probably the the first one that comes to mind is the River District because it's already a mixed-use zone. Typically, it's better to have these located in areas where you have close proximity to to some commercial, et cetera. Walkable transit. Right now, we have transit throughout our city, so that's really great. We wouldn't necessarily designate the whole area, but you may want to consider looking at the unplatted portions of the River District. Trutina would be another great one for affordable housing for seniors. The second area that kind of comes to mind is the M two zone. In the M two zone, we have a number of multi-family developments that are entitled. Right now, one of the things that we could really do, that's so that's the the light blue area. One of the things we could do is that we could actually look at those areas and see what the appetite is for some of those developers to to include some some low-income and middle-income housing opportunities within those developments. M two is another, or the the, I'm sorry, the Meadowwood Tech Campus is another area where there's the potential for some conversions to happen as well as multi-family. So that makes a lot of sense. You also see the, we just did across the board for this, for purposes of this map, all of the M two. There's a portion up off of Harvard Road that is actually, and I really don't know why it was zoned this, it just is, they have the mini storage. And then next to it is, it is a probably a fifteen-acre parcel that's undeveloped still. So but again, that so that's the thought is with M two, though, you want to kind of, you want to locate it in an area where you're where we have more opportunities for multi-family, number one. But number two, we also have some opportunities to access, you know, proximity to schools, proximity to parks, proximity to retail, et cetera. The third area that you may want to consider is Hawkstone. That's the mauve up in the up in the northeast corner. And while most of that has been, in fact, Lennar has has told me that they will finish out their their build-out in the next year for their portion of it. However, there are some parcels that were maintained or that were retained by Todd Prescott that are planned to be multi-family. Now, he does low-income housing. In fact, he did the Liberty Apartments, et cetera. And so that that may be an opportunity and it may be just the portions that are intended for multi-family that you may want to consider. And lastly, we marched the thirty-five acres that is next to the high school. That's an R two zone. And there may be some opportunities to do some more small-scale like small-scale apartments and cottage housing, et cetera, in the R two zone. And that's an area that is absolutely unencumbered. The school, but the school district intends to surplus it at some point. So those were just some of the thoughts about where we could go. Next slide, please. Again, I want to emphasize that the intent is to incentivize construction of affordable and mixed-income housing in targeted areas. And the intent is to kind of encompass, it makes sure that it is a mix of income levels, which is very consistent with our comp plan. In fact, our comp plan housing goal two is to enhance housing availability and affordability for all economic segments of the population. So I think that that, this is very consistent with our comprehensive plan. As Kyle already pointed out, the city can set their own requirements, including kind of deciding where the target areas are, the RTAs, project eligibility. And I know, for example, that that City of Spokane, back when I was Planning Director, actually, we actually expanded both the area, but also the length of time for the multi-family tax exemption. When I started there, the multi-family tax exemption was only for eight years. And they found that they didn't have a lot of takers for it. So that's so again, some considerations to what might work for Liberty Lake that in a way that actually does incentivize some more affordable housing intermixed with with other multi-family and other residential development. Costs associated with the administration may be offset through developer-paid application and monitoring fees. And one of the things that we may want to consider even a pilot project or a limited area to start to see how we can get the program off the ground. Next slide, please. So I wanted to talk a little bit about potential next steps. If the if this is something that City Council is interested in pursuing. One of the things that I I would suggest, and again, going back to my experience in the city of Spokane, is that it might make some sense to meet with developers that have the entitled multi-family projects to assess their interest and potential parameters. What are the parameters that would actually incentivize them to participate in the program? And I think really what we need, we need to dig in and do a little bit of that research and then as staff and then come back and with some recommended RTAs based upon kind of that assessment. Maybe some program parameters, eligibility requirements, and approaches to the program, the program administration. And with program administration, you know, we have a couple of options. Even a small program is probably going to require, you know, up to a quarter F T E to administer the program once it's developed. But there are other options potentially. But there are other options potentially, we could look at. An interlocal agreement with one of the other communities that does M F T E for administration of our program. We could also look at. Either a consultant. To administer it or perhaps. A not for profit or a C D F I. That, that could administer the program. So there are some options we could look at and some of it depends upon. The impacts to, operational impacts are really going to depend upon. The extent of the program etc. So there, there are some considerations that we'd like to take a deeper dive into. As we kind of craft this to be able to, to give you more of an understanding of what. What it would take to implement that. And. The last question that I have is if, if this is something that the city is. Interested, if city council is interested in exploring further. And really digging into. Perhaps we could even add M F T E as an implementation strategy to our housing. I think it's, we don't have a lot of tools in our toolbox and this would, this would actually be a tool that could really. Have some likes. So with that, I guess. Kyle and I are available for questions. Also Deb, think with Ohana is in the audience and. Maria Williams, who is Deb's associate is online and has been promoted as a panelist. If you have questions for them.
Councilmember Ball.
The parcel that the CBSD.
Can you get closer to your mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. The, the parcel that CBSD, they own that? Okay, is that the old gun club?
It's the portion, so the, can we go back to that, the map please? So the portion of the site. To the very north, the northern five acres. Is actually where the, where they have the, where basically they've entered the lead, the lead contaminated soil. The purple piece is the thirty five acres that they intend to surplus. There's also down at the bottom, there's also a twenty five acre piece. That they're hanging on to for a potential future middle school and elementary school. So it's only the thirty five acres that, that they've expressed an intent to surplus at some point.
Okay, but it's clean now where they would.
Yes.
Plant something.
Yeah, that would be an environmental justice situation.
Oh, and the little blue one. Way up top. Where is, that's on Harvard.
Harvard, that's the mini storage and then right, right to the south of it.
Yeah.
Is like a fifteen acre parcel. There's a, I think there's a, I, I don't know whether it's a. A double wide mobile home or whether it's a ranch.
There's a, there's a, there's a set of duplex.
Yeah, there's something there. Yeah, okay.
Hey, Mayor Bertum, I think I saw your hand up.
Yeah, real quick. Deb. I'm wondering if you can answer this question for me. At the last meeting that you were at with us. I can't remember who it was, but somebody said, do you have any locations in mind? And you, you didn't rightfully, you didn't want to say. Could you tell us if any of the locations that you're thinking about? Are in these areas? Okay. Thank you.
Well, well stated. All right, any other questions? Well, I think it was, I think Lisa's suggestion of, you know, maybe getting a feel for the developers in these areas. Before we spin our wheels too much, see what the appetite is. Obviously, there's, we know of at least one project that will benefit. But I think, you know. Trying to meet with those property owners and the developers for those, those areas would be the great next step. Sounds like.
Is there anything? That you guys need from us on to? To do that, to make that happens?
Say if there's no objections, go for it. I don't hear any objections. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, I know Lisa, don't go too far. You're up again. All right, next up we have the twenty twenty six to twenty thirty one capital facilities plan. You have a large copy in front of you at your.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I know how you love looking at these spreadsheets in the PowerPoint. So I made sure that we had a large version. Can you pull up my presentation? Perfect. Next slide please. So talk about, a little bit about process and timeline and then I'll kind of take you through the spreadsheets. So the preliminary draft is, is really, we're starting now. It's intended to be a conversation. We're looking for initial input and feedback on, particularly on twenty twenty six. Projects because of course those need to go into the budget. And actually possibly twenty twenty seven also. Although we have the twenty year capital facilities plan coming and I'll kind of give the context to that as well. So. C P A and public hearing notice for this proposed C F P needs to be published by November fourth. The public hearing for the C F P is on November eighteenth. With adoption planned on December second. So we're running parallel with the budget process in terms of the schedule. Next slide please. So. How to read the document? First of all. We start with the twenty twenty five through twenty thirty C F P. And with projects, transportation projects as were approved in the twenty twenty six through twenty. Thirty one. Transportation Improvement Plan. Those are, those are things that you as council have already adopted. So that's the base. We, we also look at. The timing and staff capacity. Future infrastructure, future infrastructure and construction costs. Are adjusted based upon the Mortenson Construction Cost Index. We used a ten year average for that and that came out to be five point eight percent. Equipment is based on the. Producers Price Index, which is. Euro Labor Statistics puts that out for specifically for machinery and equipment. And we looked at the six year average on that. As being five point three percent. In both cases, the, the, the. The average that we took was the more conservative. Projects with grant funding. In this document. Reflects the full expenditure proposed, but you should see in the notes section if we have already secured the grant. The value of the grant dollars. But again, because all of our grants are reimbursement based. And we, we put the full amount in the budget. Because we operate on a cash basis. Additions and or updated amounts are shown in red. And we've tried to include explanations for changes in the notes column. Next slide please. So, and I want to give you the context again. With our comprehensive plan. So G M A requires that, that the annually adopted C F P. Covers a minimum of six years. And that it basically is incorporated into the comp plan by reference. The comprehensive plan periodic update is due in twenty twenty six. And as you know and have heard, we were talking about within. Within the twenty year planning period. The city reaching build out. And so it's super important that as we look to this twenty twenty six comprehensive plan update. That we include a twenty year capital facilities plan that really becomes the roadmap. For how we're going to build out the city. The way the community envisioned it. Next slide please. So. We have a number of master plans that are, and documents underway right now. That are going to inform that twenty year capital facilities plan. And I don't have the results from most of them yet. We have some. Parts and pieces and we'll talk about that when we get into the spreadsheet, what we've plugged in as placeholders for those. But we have the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that will be finished up this fall. The cities, the city facilities master plan also to be finished this fall. The pavement master plan, we've got the data and now we have to, but now we have to crunch it and prioritize it etc. That'll be an input to that twenty year capital facilities plan. Our sidewalk master plan, again, we have the data, but we actually want to undertake. The sidewalk master plan and we'll be workshopping that with you in October. And finally, the transportation network analysis, which is underway, that will also be finishing up this fall. And all of those inputs help, will help us to inform. What that twenty year capital facility plan looks like. And then we, and then we have to go through a process to make sure that it's fiscally constrained. And so we may end up with potential projects that are not within the twenty year plan. That if we can find funding for, may move on to the, on to that capital facilities plan in future years. So next slide please. So I went through. Basically worksheet by worksheet to talk about the, the highlights that I think you should be aware of. So the first one is construction of Mission Avenue overlay. T P seven. It may actually end up rolling over into twenty twenty six. Because of the pavement strike. That's the, the papers are on strike right now. So Mission Avenue Improvements, T P four. T P four and Multer Avenue. Or Multer Overlay T P one, both have grant funding and the dollar amounts are listed in the notes column. Timing for Appleway Trail Extension, T P twenty three reflects the timing of. Country Vista Rebuild, T P two, and specifically it's the second, phase two. Because phase one will be the section from Liberty Lake Road to Kramer. Phase two will be the Kramer to, to city. To the, the city boundary. T P fourteen, T P fifteen and T P sixteen, oh, and, and Stormwater S W five. Reflect ongoing maintenance and repair of various city assets. So it's plugging in. An average per year and growing it with the, with the inflation rate. To recognize that we have to, we have to keep up on our. On maintaining our assets. The Liberty Lake Road Country Vista Intersection. Improvements, T P seventeen came out of our short term. Network analysis model. We're going to be adding a second right hand turn lane. And it will be done as part of, as part of. The T P two, the Country Vista rebuild. And I don't have the dollar amounts for that yet because literally just, it's hot off the presses.
Quick clarification on that one Lisa, additional, addition of dual. East bound, so coming from Home Depot. I'm confused.
So if you're coming from Home Depot to City Hall.
Yeah.
But you want to make a right hand turn. We need two right hand turn lanes is what we need.
Left or right? This is.
Left, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Left turn.
To go up toward, to go, that's okay, to go up, yeah, because it backs up there at Banner and Oaks. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So, so, so it's going to turn. Left like to go to the grocery stores?
Going north. Grocery stores or I ninety?
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
So, and Sprague Avenue Stormwater S one. Originally, we were going to try and do that ahead of the Sprague Avenue rebuild. But as we've looked at the design, we've discovered that there's, it really has to be. Done differently. And what, what we're going to have to do is we're going to actually. Have to. As we, as we do the rebuild, we'll be sloping the road. To the north. And we'll be using right of way on the city side. For that storm water. So it has to go to the Sprague Avenue rebuild. What we were, what we were looking at in terms of. Other options just didn't work. Next slide please. Oh wait, before, before, go on, just questions for transportation.
Yeah, at least I was going to ask you a quick question about. T P fourteen through sixteen. I guess specifically fourteen and fifteen. The amount that's in here. By year, I mean, it varies twenty to twenty five on the. On fourteen and then thirty to thirty nine on fifteen. Is that? Is that just for bare bones maintenance?
That is the five point, each year we're increasing it by five point eight. I'm going to let Ben take this.
So right now, it's, it's, it's a really. Semi educated guess because we haven't done that in the past. I saw some really good successes with the pedestrian crossing allocation this year. And we've probably spent. We're probably seventy percent on that one right now. We've got some bigger projects that we may want to do before the end of the year, may not have time to do that, but. It's, it's just, just for instance, you see on the consent agenda today to replace some sprinklers on Alter, I think it was somewhere around fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars. So you kind of see, we have to do that all over the city because all those sprinklers are just, they're, they're through, through their lifecycle. Allows us to do like one or two of those projects.
Right, so it seems pretty bare.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, this is really a ten year plan at these funds.
So I'm wondering then, just kind of thinking out loud if. It would be beneficial for us to think about potentially having it be more than that. And the reason why I say that perhaps, I mean, street tree replacement, I think is pretty important considering. That we've been a tree city, we're known for our trees. And we do have a lot of trees that are not in great shape in certain parts of the city. But perhaps the most important thing I see among those fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. Is the roundabout and median beautification. And the reason why I bring that up, I mean. One, we have a very large roundabout. Right when you enter our city, coming westbound off of I ninety. And if that looks like garbage, that's a pretty bad first impression to be making. On the, on the same token here, if you're coming. Eastbound and you're getting off on I ninety and you're coming into the city and passing all those medians. That have trees and stuff in them, if they're not well taken care of, that also is a black guy. So. That's more of a commentary, but I guess my question would be. Could we do a lot more? With a slight increase in that funding or where? I, I, I know that you probably have made these recommendations. Would you recommend we do even more? If we were really going to beautify those, those areas?
I mean, it's just a matter of how many roundabouts do we get to a year? Because we have some that haven't had any, like the Kramer Roundabout is still just weeds.
Right.
I know we're waiting for Parks and Art to kind of figure out that we're new there, but whereas we plan on. You know, influxing basically a roundabout or median. So we, we could definitely. Up that and this is, this, this represents a lot of upgrades on this. This isn't the full cost. This doesn't cover our in-house workforce where we maintain these. Whether it's through horticulture or roadside maintenance. This is really just to upgrade these. Or replace larger features like sprinkler systems and things like that.
More hardware than, than labor.
Could be more contracts and things like that.
Okay.
For ourselves, but we definitely could. Use it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Ball and Councilmember Van Norman.
Okay, so. T P ten. Mission Avenue Grind and Overlay, that's. North of I ninety.
Yes, from the storage facility to Harvard. So we did that Mission Avenue project where we. Well, actually Greenstone did it.
Yeah.
And so, but the rest of it still needs to be done. So from the storage facility, that's where the Greenstone project stopped. To Liberty Lake Road.
Okay, so my question.
Or Harvard Road, excuse me.
Pardon me?
Harvard Road.
Yeah, 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 no, I got you. Okay, so. Storage facility to Harvard. Okay, so then. This is weird. I noticed this. Okay, so S W one. Moved from twenty twenty five to twenty twenty eight to be constructed as part of T P ten. That's nowhere near that. Is that a mistake?
To be near.
Okay, so Stormwater Project One. Sprague from Multer.
To T P eight, it's T P eight. Sprague Avenue rebuilt.
Actually it's T P eight.
The note in the gra, in the grid is off, but the description Linda on the word document is correct. It says.
So we've had a number of changes in this document and so that was just one that didn't get. So that's on the description actually.
Okay, so wait a minute. So S W one's going to go along with T P eight.
Yeah, if you look at the word document you have, it's correct here. I just didn't get the note to get updated. That's a good catch. Thanks.
Yeah, I know. I just, what is, what are you doing? Okay, okay. That goes with S W one. Okay, and then also. Swap. This Stormwater, is, is that due to the A P A being renewed?
I'm sorry.
Oh, this, under the funding sources swap. Is that new and do it because?
Water, Stormwater and Aqua for Protection. And if you will recall, we did the Stormwater Master Plan. Alternate. Alternate source for Stormwater and Aquifer Protection. If. An alternate strategy for increasing Stormwater. And Aquifer Protection if the the Aquifer Protection didn't go through.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So so we have a if it if it fails, we have another, we have another strategy to fund the. Stormwater utility for the city, so.
Okay.
And that was and that council approved that. Two years ago, I think.
Is that all you had? I didn't want to jump too soon. Councilmember Van Norman.
Thank you. I had a couple of things, Lisa. Is there any other grants that we can go after? To help us with some of these projects?
Yeah, so we 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 are going after. Trying to think what. So we are looking at going after more TIB money for the various sections of Multer. It's it's a such is so but right now we're going after. We're gonna be doing the. Mission Avenue on the north side, we're going after TIB grant money for that. We don't know if we'll get it or not, so. But we have been in. Have been in consultation with TIB on that one for this year's application. And the Multer since Multer Road, the one section already got was funded through another source. The two other Multer Road, the center section and the south section. Are good candidate are really good candidates for TIB, so we'll be going after that potentially also. Anywhere you see in the funding source. A slash TIB, it's one that we think is is potentially TIB eligible.
Perfect. One more thing I just knowing since I went ahead and put in Tree City USA. It's two dollars per capita. At least that's what we started out with. Per year. So if. We can kind of ramp that up a little bit, I can see some pretty sad trees. Or that need to be replaced.
It also we also just brought on. An urban forester.
Yes.
So that that counts for that also.
Yes, perfect.
Thanks, Lisa. TP two. Am I to understand the landscape islands are gonna be similar to Mission?
So. Yes and no. So the land we. We are doing the landscape islands as a traffic calming. We're gonna be not so much doing trees as we're gonna be doing. More sparse planting with the basalt, more like what you see along along. Along the frontage of Trailhead. Just because it's gonna be easier to maintain, it's gonna be less work, et cetera. But the traffic calming, we've this is always been viewed in the comprehensive plan as one of our boulevards. And and it's also super necessary as we see development go out. Country Vista, we really need to get more traffic calming out there. We need to make it more pedestrian oriented. We're gonna have a lot more. People living out there as well as a lot more businesses and so. We really need to create the environment that makes people feel safe and comfortable when they're walking. And that's a big part of when you use the medians, it has. A psychological impact on the driver that it automatically causes them to slow down because it feels like they're driving in a mirror or a street section. Right now, it's an air it looks like an airport runway. And so people fly down that.
Yeah, no, I I understand that. I I'm curious as to whether we've done any studies as to. In increased traffic accidents or anything since we've installed those on on. On Appleway.
So I I I don't know the answer. I don't know the answer to that, but. But I will say that national data shows that this is it's a traffic calming feature.
Sure.
And so so. I I I can't speak specifically to our city and.
Can we can we ask the PD to just weigh in on that with an update mark?
We can.
Yeah, just be curious to know. I mean, I I I use Appleway every day and and it's frankly less safe to to drive as a driver.
One of the problems with Appleway honestly is that and we've learned a lot as we've done these medians. When we did Liberty Lake. Road, we did a lot less plantings and even that was too much. Appleway was designed to be. Fully fully vegetated. At the time that it it and we didn't consider what it would look like as it fully grew out. And so and I I know that that's those are there. Those are stories that I've heard. From older employees who have been with the city longer and so I know that they scaled it down. And we scaled it back again. We have draft engineering standards for those medians that are scaled back even further from. What even Liberty Lake Road was. So. Definitely it will be a more. A more. Spars. Vegetation plan.
Deputy Chief, do you have any anecdotal? Stories of the safety on Liberty on Appleway? With when since the medians went in years ago?
Not any significant numbers that I can really tell you right off the start. I know that they have been a contributing factor. And in some of the accidents that have been involved there as far as the treaty, the foliage and stuff like that. But I can't tell you the exact number that of actually accidents that have occurred based on that fact.
Well, I know there's been, you know, people have run into the trees, but I suspect there were other con contributing circumstances to those.
Most of those accidents had several other contributing factors. And that was probably the main contributing factors of the one we're referring to.
Yeah. Right, thanks. But we'll. Mayor Protim.
Can I, Lisa, circle back and maybe Ben can answer this as well to the. TP fourteen on the tree replacement. And and maybe this is a subject that we need to discuss more in a in a workshop discussion with the arborist, but I just wonder if. If we should be concentrating on trying to inject our trees as much as we possibly can. With pesticide or whatever it might be needed to make sure that they're not dying. To the extent where we have to yank them out each year or yank them out every couple of years because you know the bugs are getting to them. I I know that. In in my case, we inject all of our trees on our property and that keeps. The aphids away, which are a big problem with the ash trees, but if you look down the street. Where people don't do the injections, I mean, the trees are look like they're almost dead or dying. It's same thing around Rocky Hill Park, so that's a. More of a comment on whether we should be doing more injections as opposed to a tree replacements.
Yeah, so I actually bought an injection machine this year. So Dan and Todd have started doing that. And you know, like you said, we we are, he is finding a lot of. Lot of that, we're gonna have to quite a few. I mean, I think you can see where Town Square Park during the first that. It's in town. So it's one, a couple of them on Town Square Park on the parking strip there. Yeah, we've already started doing that. I mean, Dan has. Turned, I mean, the program. Is is just going up and up with Dan and I might look forward to it. If he could come talk to you guys. We're actually looking to get him on a podcast here soon before Paul comes because he does get a lot of. Questions about that. He's been attending some of the public events to just kind of hold for people that have questions, so. Definitely a great asset for the city and yeah, we're actually like, yeah, we and it's not just pesticides. I think we're injecting some kind of protein. It's like vitamins for trees. So they started doing that this summer. I think I put a photo on the Facebook page. Eight months ago, so.
Great.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Kenny, we haven't had heard any questions from you. You good? Okay, anybody else, Lisa? All right. Think we're good? Oh, next one, yeah.
So Parks and Public Facilities. So I want to walk you through there's. This one is probably the one that's most pending. Pending completion of the master facilities plan, it's pending. Completion of the parks plan and in some cases, we're actually still waiting on some estimates, so I'm gonna kind of. Take you through what is here and and what it's based on, so. The Police Improvement Plan PF three reflects PD facility upgrades, our current PD facility. That are necessary to maintain accreditation standards. New City Hall upgrade reflects fully loaded costs for renovations of legacy church to include. Design, construction. Taxes FF and E, which is furniture fixtures and equipment. And that is based on the BCRA estimate right now, but it's that's it's still soft cost may change. Parks and Arts PF five has updated their twenty twenty six request and I just got this on Friday. To two hundred and eighty four thousand five hundred, which includes a rollover of seventy seven thousand five hundred. From their twenty twenty five projects. For Pavilion Park Improvement, staff is anticipating cost estimates for the twenty twenty six. Planned work on September sixteenth. We've already gotten some of it, but I don't have a complete set, so. We'll we'll have an update for you on that when we have all of the estimates in. Yeah.
Can can you roll back to public art? Where two hundred and eighty four, where do you see that? What am I missing?
It's it's not there. They I just found out on Friday. I this was already in the bag.
So the spreadsheet, in some cases, the spreadsheet and the presentation have different information on it because of changes we received within the last couple of days.
I'm trying to update you on what I what I know is going to change.
Okay.
So um so yeah, so this is a it's a moving target. But again, I want you to know that numbers change through this process. This is our early kind of just having the conversation with you all. City Hall Asset Management PF ten and Library PD Asset Management. Totally reflect costs for maintenance as identified by the asset management software. And again, we're using the the assumed construction cost of five point eight percent per year as the inflationary factor. City Hall renovations PF twelve reflect costs for renovation and building system updates. To this building for the Parks Office. Next slide, please. We, oh, yeah, there we go. Town Square Master Plan PF thirteen. Is to be determined based on the outcome of the facility master plan and the parks plan. The Siting Master Plan for new community pool PF fourteen may be updated based on the outcome of the Parks Master Plan. Renovation of old library space PF fifteen recognizes the need for additional space. For PD as the city builds out and so that's a cost that that. Is premised, it's in your twenty thirty one and actually twenty thirty two, which is not even part of this. Following an assumed build out for a new library community center PF twenty. And then. Yeah.
Fourteen. When did a PF fourteen? We've not discussed that very much.
We haven't discussed it at all. I I mean, it was added last year to the to the program. It was added last year to the program. Again, the the. Parks Master Plan will presumably give us more more of a. More of an indication on timing, et cetera. And possible locations.
Okay.
So I I just I just think that once we have the Parks Master Plan, we'll have more data points.
So just as a some additional context, there there's a sheet called. The potential futures, future projects list. Going into last year's budget cycle, the pool was on that list.
Right now.
Council made a decision to move it off of that list and put it in as a citing exercise in twenty twenty seven. That's what you're seeing on the CFP now.
Yes.
Lisa, real quick before we turn the page, can I ask you two questions on this page? One, is there any way we can update PF twelve so that there's no confusion to say old city hall? When I first looked at that, I thought, I thought, wait a minute. And then I read it obviously and knew what it was, but I'm just wondering. If we can just make like we're doing with the.
Does that work? Curtains?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah, absolutely.
The other question I have is. On PF five for the public art. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we. We required via ordinance, I believe it was, two percent of the sales tax revenue to go each year to public art. So should these, I I don't know what the exact number is, maybe Kyle knows off the top of his head. Should these numbers? Reflect that or do they reflect that?
So that's a question for Jen. This is this is the the Parks and Arts. Puts together their own plan and it's. So this reflects their plan, but as I said, one of the projects that is getting gonna get rolled over this year. They just let us know that it was gonna get rolled over or they revised the twenty twenty six budget to include this rolled over project, so. Is Jen on the line?
It was about one hundred and fifty, wasn't it Kyle? About one hundred and fifty thousand or? Okay. Okay.
Yeah, do you want me to, she's she's online, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, if she knows the answer to the question, I mean, she's she's been working with them on this, the the.
She's here.
Oh, no, that doesn't that doesn't reflect anything in that. Line item.
Yeah, it does not reflect.
No, this is just what they're proposing for next year.
So Mayor Protim, if I can interject, so they. They plan using a five year rolling strategic plan. And so one of the things I think that you'll see after they bring on the consultant that they're proposing to bring on is a much more robust program starting next year. For the following three years, which could easily start this year. It's just the numbers that are reflected in the current CFP reflect what. The Parks and Arts Commission has already programmed into their five year plan that starts next year. So that that's going to change as it rolls year to year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, back to this art. I'm confused. So the four hundred and ninety one thousand dollars under. Twenty twenty six through twenty thirty one. It was at the rollover was the the sculpture that's gonna be at the. Kramer Parkway and. Country Vista? Or that's going in this year?
Oh, they have. They have actually moved that project. To become murals instead. And then they're going, it once we get the artist consultant on board. We're going to. Kind of gather up our information with the new artist consultant and go back out for the. Kramer Parkway. So the funds that are. In. The Kramer Park. Roundabout are going to get transferred. To murals. And then they're going to re reassess with the artist consultant.
So Linda, are you asking about the south side of the bridge or the north side of the bridge?
The south side.
Bridge. No, Linda was asking about the south side.
Right, the thing with the glasses that.
Yeah, so the south side is going to be done this year. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm still I I still don't understand what the four hundred and ninety one thousand. What was rolled over into that? I I guess I'm.
Nothing was rolled over into the four hundred and ninety one thousand. The four hundred and ninety one thousand is the total across all lines. There's another. Seventy seven thousand five hundred from that was programmed for twenty twenty five. It's gonna go into twenty twenty six. So the new number now is and they have the new number that they gave me was.
Oh, that's the two eighty fourish.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Anybody else on this section?
So I had two other points and and I think that they're important ones. So renovation of the old library space, oh, I already said that, but the new library community center PF twenty. Uses the estimate for option two from the facility plan as a placeholder. Because I guess all of the most nearly all of the feedback that we've gotten from the public is pointing to option two. So that's that that's what we used as a placeholder. I know that there's more to be come on that. Parking lot restoration PF twenty two. Is a new project. It creates an annual fund for maintenance of parking lots at. um, is a new project. It creates an annual fund for maintenance of parking lots at city facilities. So that's, so that again is another preservation type of um piece. Hmm, and that's the last of Parks and Public Facilities. Next slide, please.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Actually, I do have a question in reference to PF twenty, where you just made a comment that looks like citizen selection has been option two. Do we actually have numbers on how many citizens have participated in that?
I don't, Mark, Mark?
Well, we have the numbers that will be presented uh, in the presentation on the sixteenth when we, or is it the sixteen, the sixteenth when we update you on the Facility Master Plan? Rough estimate, it, it was about eighty percent in favor of option two and split of twenty percent on the other two options.
Thank you. That's October what?
September, the, the next council meeting, September sixteenth.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Anything else on Parks and Public Facilities? All right, next slide, please. Long-range planning. So um, LR two and LR three reflect ongoing work for the uh, periodic update grant, which you just uh, approved uh, um, at the last meeting and the climate planning grant uh, which you're gonna hopefully approve later in this meeting in support of the comp plan in twenty twenty six. As you remember, we had, we were split with, between two state bienniums. So we got, they parsed our grants across the, the two bienniums. So um, and I do show grant cash flow because these are based on the, the deliverables. So this, the grant cash flow that is down at the bottom, which is really for Kyle's benefit in uh, in doing cash flow, et cetera, shows what um, based upon the timing of the deliverables, what, when we're gonna actually receive the reimbursements for these. So um, again, that's to, to assist Kyle in budget. Yes.
But just to clarify, uh, Lisa, we are not gonna be getting any money for implementation. This is just the plan piece.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Um. So Solid Waste Management Plan LR five is a new project and it's estimated at sixty five thousand. We will have to go out, I, I think that uh, Ben went out for proposals and came up dry with the twenty five thousand that we thought it was gonna cost. Or that had previously been programmed for that.
Councilmember Ball, go ahead.
So I did have a question about that, so um. It elaborate on that, cause don't we have waste management?
It is a state requirement that we, as a city um, have a solid waste management plan. We are woefully behind in um, updating our solid waste management plan. Um, so.
It, it's roughly required every ten years. And ours was due to be updated in twenty twenty four. So we are in need of updating it. And, but we need expert capacity. Um, we don't have the capability of doing that in-house, so.
Okay. Um, also, we've added the Harvard Road Impact Fee uh, Study Update. LR six is planned for twenty twenty seven. Once we get through the comp plan and development code changes, we know that based upon our updated um, our updated uh, uh, network analysis and transportation plan that we should be looking at updating uh, the Harvard Road mitigation fees as well. And lastly, um, we're updating our development standards in tw- in twenty twenty six on the development code. And we hope in twenty twenty seven to update our engineering design standards. Again, um, we are long overdue to do this. We have lots and lots of um, plans for this. One of the things that we do need to program, we don't, we do not have uh, AutoCAD within the city and it's very expensive software, by the way. Um, we really need to hire somebody to do our, and it would be our on-call engineer to do standard drawings. And so we're estimating that to be a- around eighty five thousand. So that, that is the long-range planning. Next uh, slide, please. Um, so equipment capital purchases. I think your papers are out of order. I'm sorry. I don't know how that happened. Um. We were having happier issues earlier today. So equipment, um, I wanted to just point out that uh, there are no descriptions for equipment in your description package. Notes should be, this notes column should be self-explanatory. And if you have any questions, you'll have to ask Jen or Ben. I, this is straight from them.
Are there any questions for Jen or Ben on this? And thank you, Ben, for catching my cue there. All right, and then projects by others. Next slide, please.
The next phase of the hub expansion OT three is projected to occur in twenty twenty eight. That is her fill. Um. Uh, property acquisition for STA Transit Parking OT, OT T six is for twenty twenty eight. That's based upon their long-range, the STA's long-range plan. Construction is not planned until twenty thirty six, so that dropped off of our um, our CFP, but it also um, is beyond the period. It's after the, it's after the sunset for the Tiffen lift. So, and they've been told. Um. So that's, so that's no longer reflected on here. Um. Phase two for Cataldo Road Extension OT seven is not anticipated, anticipated to be completed until twenty twenty six. Again, we're close to issuing permits on that, but um, with the asphalt strike, um, I'm sure they won't be finishing it it up this season. Uh, Kramer Parkway Construction may be completed this year, so they've got that construction already underway. But it won't, but they won't be seeking reimbursement until next year. So the importance of this is more for cash flow for Tiff Lift. I, I should point that out. And the Indiana Extension is complete, but Greenstone will not likely be reimbursed until twenty twenty six. They haven't submitted the package yet. And it takes, and it takes a little while with accounting. Any questions on projects by others?
Councilmember Ball, um, OT six, um, where exactly is this? What's Green Acres flyover? I guess I don't know what that is.
So that is the, that is the exit um, across, it's kind of a, a cross into the west of the high school on Appleway. It's the ramp that's called.
Yeah, it's, it's the Appleway exit. As you're going west, it only goes the one way.
Oh, right, right, right.
One way.
It's, it's a, it's a bypass for oversized loads because we have some bridges that are too low for uh, federal highway standards.
Um, so as you're going west, okay, then.
And we just, and then it.
Barker Road being one of them.
So you're talking about, okay, so yeah, you're going west on freeway, and it walks over into, into Appleway.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Um. Any other questions?
Yeah, Lisa, um. Let's see here. So the Harvest Parkway Extension, um, did you, did you tell us? I, I know all, all these uh, in, in the red appear to be, they're not gonna seek reimbursement until next year, or yeah, until next year, but are any of these gonna be complete this year? That you wear up?
Kramer Parkway maybe, but we don't know for sure because they're farther along in their construction. But again, with the, with the pavement strike, if it's, if it, if it ends too late, they're not, it's not gonna happen. Indiana Extension is done, um, but as I said, they haven't even put their paperwork together. Uh, Harvest Parkway Extension is gonna be done at the same time as the Cataldo, and they're both part of Toledo Station.
Okay.
Um. Other questions? Let's see, we're, we're, I'm about to land the plane here, guys, so.
No, it's all always very interesting to see all of this.
Um, so again, here is your potential projects list um, from last year. I haven't touched it. That's usually something that you, City Council, that's something we'll weigh in on. Um, just wanted you to have it to look at. Um, and I mean, if, if you know of anything, but I do feel like you'll have a lot more input as these, these master plans start wrapping up. Um, next slide, please. So we have started uh, engagement. We're doing our best to do some early engagement and really the desired outcomes from this engagement process, process. We wanna get feedback from the commissions. We wanna, and we also wanna get their feedback as engaged citizens, but we're also asking them to help us get the word out and engage other citizens in the capital facilities plan. So um, so thus far, I have met with all the commissions but Parks and Arts, who I'm meeting with next Monday. Right, to share this and to just, as, as we're still making the sausage.
Yep, uh, Lisa, back to the schedule. When's, when's our next uh, discussion on this?
Well, so it's not scheduled. I need you to tell me, you have the council and mayor, when, when you want me to bring this back. And um, again, we have budget workshops. We can very easily piggyback this on.
That's usually what we do.
It, it's usually what we do, yes. And um, again, um, so, so as you look at your workshop schedule, if you wanna let me know when you want me to bring this back. Um, I think it's uh, it'll give you some time to digest and be prepared to give me a little bit more feedback than tonight. Sorry, short. Yeah.
Yeah, Lisa, I talked to Ben about this a little bit uh, when we were working the farm, farmer's market a couple of weeks ago. I'm curious, and, and I'm not sure that, whether this would go here or um, what, what it would take to at least look at it, but I was curious about the possibility on the northeast corner of Liberty Lake Road and Appleway, whether there may be an opportunity to have a dedicated lane that cuts through that corner to go straight to the freeway.
So the problem with that, uh, the problem with that is um, that uh, it, we, we've already, we're already having some pedestrian safety issues because people think that even if they have a, they have a red arrow, they think that they can still turn right on red and they're not seeing the pedestrians because they're crossing uh, a fairly large swath. We're actually, we actually talked about from a pedestrian and bicyclist's safety standpoint, actually putting up some signage that says no right on red arrow. Uh, uh, again, um. The, the the network analysis is going to be looking at um other potential um, improvements to that intersection. I know it's one that it, it's not, it, it's not it's still within our level of service right now, but it won't be um, it, but it won't be in the future. And so the, the long-term analysis will be looking for some solutions to that. And so those will be things that you'll see as part of the network analysis that will plug into the transportation plan, but I don't know what the solution is right now. I do know that the, this pedestrian safety thing is, is a real issue and that we've heard that from several residents over the course of the last year or so.
I've got it, I've got it. I'll, I'm not gonna take up this meeting, but I've got a question for you about that, so if you can stick around when we're done. So Mayor Protim and then Councilmember Ball.
One uh, uh, quick question, Lisa, on timing. Um, can you remind us what the timing is on when we need to have this signed off on and?
Yeah, can we go back to the beginning of the presentation? Because it, so we have the um, we'll have a hearing in November and the dates are on here, all the way back to the beginning. Sorry. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so um, so we'll have the hearing on November eighteenth, but December second. And that gives us a little bit of wiggle room if it has to get pushed to the um, to the second meeting in December. A little bit.
Right, Councilmember Ball, go ahead.
So my question was, where, where are these pedestrians feeling more, most fearful? What intersections? Appleway and Liberty Lake, obviously.
That's, that's what we've heard. Um, so, so Mark just did a survey on that as part of the budget of for um, sidewalks?
Yeah, so the question that we asked wasn't specifically where are you feeling unsafe? It, it asked where you would like to see some improvement with respect to street and sidewalk. Um, and we got a lot of feedback that indicated you're two big intersections down here at Liberty Lake, Country Vista, and then Liberty Lake and Appleway are the two obvious candidates. And then anywhere where you have conflicting vehicle and pedestrian movements, where you have uh, permitted left and right turn movement, you're, you're going to have pedestrian, potential pedestrian conflict. So as you ratchet up or down the volume of both pedestrians and vehicles, you're going to have more concern.
Yeah. And again, one of the things I'd like to say is that we don't have the final, the final build-out analysis and the final kind of, haven't workshopped at all. The recommendations, that'll go to Planning Commission, it'll also go to you guys. And um, uh, ultimately, you'll get to direct us on what your preferred mitigations are. And that will have to go into the transportation plan. So I, I, I feel like we're gonna have a lot more information that probably wouldn't go into the twenty twenty six, but again, we'll go into the, certainly the uh, we'll certainly go into the twenty-year capital facilities plan. You'll have, it'll be a lot more data-driven um, at that point because we'll, we'll really know what it looks like now, short-term and long-term.
All right, any other questions for Lisa? We'll be back to revisit this a couple of times in the future.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Hey, Consent Agenda.
Um, excuse me, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve a general business consent agenda items ten A, B, C, D, E, N, F, and G.
Second, you have a second by. All those in favor of approving consent agenda items A through G, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. Um, we have no general business action items. We are up to council comments. Anything further from the council, save our future workshops. Councilmember Kurtz?
I just had one question, and it didn't occur to me when we did the citizen comments earlier, but there was reference of a citizen comment, but I don't think I received it.
I didn't hear.
It was in the email today.
Yeah. And I've been having a little trouble with my email, so I wasn't sure if it was me, but I didn't get a citizen comment, so.
Send that back out, Michelle. Thanks. Thank you for that. All right, any other council comments? Not hearing any. No public hearings or appeals, no resolutions. We do have a fir- first read ordinance, correct?
Yes.
Okay, first read ordinance.
Ordinance sixty seven D and Ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending ordinance sixty seven C passed August eighteenth, twenty twenty, amending business license regulations for the City of Liberty Lake.
Right, um, no emergency ordinances? Introduction of upcoming agenda items? There it is. Oh, first word. For today. Uh, okay, we've got uh, obviously September seconds tonight. We have several things on the sixteenth at the next meeting, facilities master plan, Harvard mitigation risk plan and co-housing. Uh, the special meeting on the thirtieth on the governance manual, um, followed by some more, um, several more on the seventh. And we'll be starting to get into our budget special meetings as well. Uh, we can narrow those down as we get closer. Um, the second meeting in October, the fourteenth, is the one where we present the budget. Is there anything that anybody wants to add? For future workshops? I know we've got, gonna have a whole plate. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Not so much add, but I wonder if it's been eliminated or maybe I'm missing something here. Didn't we have, I know Councilman Kurtz had put together committee with two other council members for uh, social media.
Right.
Uh, what's happened to that?
Um, we submitted our draft to Sean and I think we needed to get back around with him, but I think that there were some other legal things that kept him busy over the last couple weeks or so.
I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I'm not sure that we have a date yet to bring that back.
Well, let's get it back on there under with TBD, so we don't lose sight. Thanks for that, Councilmember Kennedy.
Get some idea of the date that it might be. Thank you.
No problem. All right, Mayor Protim.
All right, can I make a um, motion to move the November fourth meeting?
Good point.
To November third, Monday?
It would be a Monday, because that's election night.
Yeah.
Have that second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All right. All right, any discussion? On moving the November fourth meeting to November third, which is a Monday? Not hearing any. Those in favor of moving the fourth to the third for? Not hearing any. Those in favor of moving the 4th to the 3rd for November, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you for that. Councilmember Ball.
Um, okay, so I had brought up a discussion about, you know, disaster plan or whatever. I assume that's this hazard mitigation risk plan. But I was hoping to do that after I went to the um meeting about that in God, where is it? Wenatchee? And that's not total sack then?
So if I can shed some light on that, so the, in the county's uh planning schedule, one of the things that we're required to get back to them is a risk assessment rating, which we're uh in the process of completing. The date that they are taking that portion of the plan to the county commission is September the 17th. They're requiring us to do some public engagement prior to that. And so our, what we have scheduled is the public engagement piece is to brief you, the council, and by extension, have a public hearing on that particular piece of the hazard mitigation plan. That's a small piece of it. And so there will be many other opportunities for engagement and discussion with the council beyond September 16th, uh, including after October 2nd, when, when you come back from Wenatchee. But that's specifically to talk about the, the risk rating um, so that we can comply with the county's schedule.
Okay, yeah, well, single visit. Yeah, so could we get that back on here somewhere, you know, to revisit?
What, are you looking for what? A presentation on what the disaster recovery plan is?
So I, I can say we'll have, we, and we can put, we can put it on there as TBD as a placeholder. But as the hazard mitigation plan, as, as the pieces of it get uh finalized and then we add our own uh continuity of operations plan and emergency operations plan to that, uh, we, we will be briefing you along the way as those things happen. Um, the, the, uh, an important thing to consider about emergency management, i, i, if you think about it as an umbrella, is there are multiple pieces that fit under that umbrella. The hazard mitigation plan is one piece. There are multiple pieces that fit together. And we'll be bringing each of those pieces to the council to have discussions as they get considered and finalized.
Okay, just on the last, last meetings, um, you know, upcoming items, it was Hazard Mitigation Plan Ball McAvoy. Now, now it's uh, it's different, so.
Yeah, so, so it's going through the process and as, as we come with those pieces for the council to review, they will automatically go on the agenda. Okay, anybody else? Right, not hearing any. We are back to citizen comments. Is there anybody in chambers or online who'd like to make a citizen comment? If you're online, please send a note in the chat to our meeting host. If you're here in chambers, our half sheets are white still today. Go and fill one of those out. We have anybody online? Because nobody's jumping to the podium here. Nobody? Okay, all right. Um, so we will be adjourning into executive session per RCW 42 dot 30 dot 140 for A, um, an update on the LLPD collective bargaining negotiations. There will be no decisions made and when we come out, we will adjourn. But we expect to be in there for about how long, Mark?
I'd say 10 minutes.
10 minutes, um, okay, great. We'll be back.
The council has requested to extend the executive session for 10 more minutes. The council has requested an additional five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, everybody, it's 8:27. We've wrapped up our executive session. There's no more citizens before the council, so we are adjourned. Have a great night.
Thank you.